Good evening, everyone. My name is Ellen Lafferty and I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of Livingston County. I welcome you to tonight's program, featuring the candidates for the Brighton City Council. The candidates will be on the ballot of the 2024 general election, which takes place on Tuesday, November 7th. The League is a nonpartisan civic and political organization that encourages informed and active participation of all citizens in government. The League does not support candidates or parties. However, we do take stance on issues we have studied. One of the League's most important goals is to assist voters in making informed choices at the polls. Therefore, we bring you tonight's program. Our moderator tonight is the League's Vice President Shirley Jackson, who will explain the event's format and get us started. I'm turning it over to you, Shirley.
Thank you, Ellen, and good evening to everyone. Thanks for joining us. All six candidates listed on the ballot for this race were invited, and the five who chose to participate for this forum are with us today. And now it's my honor to introduce the candidates for Brighton City Council. And first of all, we have Jim Bone, and Susan Gardner, Paul Gibson, Dennis Nos, and Ken Schmank. The forum today will have this format. Each candidate will have an opening statement of up to one minute. Each candidate will have a closing statement of up to 90 seconds. And in between, I, as the moderator, will ask the questions which came from the Livingston County community. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to respond to a question. And candidates will be able to see the timer on their screen to know how much time is remaining, and a stop sign will appear when the time is up. Candidates, please stop when indicated so that all will have an equal opportunity to participate. The order of who speaks first, second, and so on will be alphabetical, and the initial responder will be rotated such that each candidate will have the opportunity to be first to answer a question. First candidate number one alphabetically gets the first opening statement and also first closing statement. The rationale behind this is that the first person should not be able to make the first impression and the last impression. So due to alphabetical order, Jim Bone, you are first, and we're ready for your opening statement.
Good evening. My name is Jim Bone, and I am seeking reelection to Brighton City Council. After serving 16 years on Brighton City Council, I believe that I still have more to offer in the way of service to the community. If reelected, I would continue to serve with integrity and by continuing to do what is in the best interest of the city. I would like to extend my greetings to the other city council candidates participating in this evening's forum. I am hopeful that the questions posed to all of us, along with our responses, will provide our city voters with meaningful information on which to make informed election decisions. I sincerely wish all of my fellow candidates good luck and success in this evening's forum. I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and for giving all of us the opportunity to participate. This evening's forum provides a valuable service to the community by giving all of the candidates the unique opportunity provide voters with a perspective of how we respond to questions of which we have no advanced knowledge. Thank you.
And now Susan Gardner, may we have your opening statement, please? Susan, you're muted.
Rookie error there. Thank you. Hi and good evening. My name is Susan Gardner. I have proudly and humbly served as a member of Brighton City Council for the past eight years. I have a bachelor's degree from Central Michigan University. I've been a Livingston County resident for over 25 years and a Brighton resident for over 10 years. In addition to city council, I serve on the Brighton Planning Commission and the Brighton Arts and Culture Commission. I'm a retired civilian from the US Army, TACOM, Detroit Arsenal in Warren, Michigan, and also served 11 years in automotive manufacturing. I volunteer often in the community. I walk the downtown and neighborhoods. And my favorite aspect is engaging with residents and business owners to help resolve issues. Should I be reelected, I will continue to advocate and work hard for every resident and business owner in the city of Brighton. Thank you.
And Paul Gibson, we're ready for your opening statement.
Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for providing this resource to our voters. My name is Paul Gibson. I was appointed a year and a half ago to city council. Highlights include serving as the liaison to the Civic Events Committee, as well as on the subcommittee to find our interim city manager, who was later appointed as our city manager and has yet to disappoint. I am a trial attorney and have been practicing for 14 years. I have a BS in biochem biotech from Michigan State. I'm running again because I believe that we all have a duty to identify our skills and prove them and use them to humbly serve others. And serving on your city council, I believe, is the best use of my education and experience. Just briefly, the following informs my thought process on council. I believe in being practical, not political. I believe in the principle of subsidiarity, which comes down to issues should be handled by the lowest competent authority. I believe the foundation of society is a family unit. Families, individuals should have the greatest possible autonomy, and that government should be ordered in such a manner as to allow for every person to grow in virtue. Thank you.
And Dennis Nos, you are next. Dennis, you are muted.
There we go. Okay, again, I'd like to thank the League as well for opening up this forum. I think it's a useful tool for all of the public to have an opportunity to get to meet us, those that don't know us. I come bringing 11 years past experience on city council back in the late 80s and early 90s. During that time, I managed to serve a term as mayor pro temp. I was on the Planning Commission. I was on the then Selkra Board of Directors, as well as I was one of two who went to interview Dana Foster. I want to get back on board. I'm retired now. I have the time to spend to dedicate much more of my time towards the issues that involve the city as it continues to grow. Thank you.
And Ken Schmank, you are next for your opening statement, please.
Thank you. And not to be a broken record, but I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring the event, and good luck to all the candidates here. I'm a single father of two absolutely amazing daughters, both in college. One is at Michigan State University in pre-med. My other daughter's at Grand Valley in marketing. I've been a resident of the city of Brighton for 10-plus years and a resident of Livingston County for 35-plus years. I'm also a business owner of an IT company. I've helped build four different IT companies where we build them and then we sell them. With this current IT company, I work with a lot of small and medium-sized government counties and cities across the United States. I have a BBA from Eastern Michigan University in Business Management. I'm currently a member of the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals for the city of Brighton. I'm also an avid cyclist. I rode my bike 12,459 miles in the last six years. And I just love the city of Brighton, and I'd like to contribute where I can. Thank you.
And thank you to all five candidates. So now, after our opening statements are finished, we are going to go on to the questions. And as a reminder, we will be reading each question once. It'll not be repeated unless requested. And candidates, please note that after each question is read aloud, it will be posted in the chat for you to take a look at. So to begin tonight, we will start with Jim Bone for question number, to start off answering question number one. And the question is, describe your qualifications and experience for this office and explain your reasons for running. How would you be an asset? Jim?
Well, thank you for that question. As I mentioned in my opening statement, I've served on Brighton City Council for 16 years. In terms of my educational background, I went at the hard way. I started working for Ford Motor Company when I was 18 years old, working hourly production, and it took me 13 years to get through undergraduate and graduate school. I worked full-time while going to school in the evening. So I know what hard work is like growing up, and that hard work basically was the foundation throughout my life as I move forward. These past 16 years certainly have been interesting for me. When I first started in 2007, to be honest, I didn't know what I didn't know as a city council member, and boy, did I learn fast. I had some good teachers. Dennis mentioned former city manager Dana Foster, who did a terrific job, you know, bringing young council members like myself up to speed and provided a lot of guidance. And I'd like to think over the last 16 years, I've learned an awful lot. I had a full career at Ford. I worked 36 years, was in upper management and a leadership position. Between my education, my work experience, and my 16 years on council, I still feel I have a lot to offer, and I'd like to use that experience to help move the city forward.
Okay, and Susan, would you please answer this same question? Oh, Susan, you're muted?
I'll get it. First of all, I do have eight years on city council. And my timing on city council, I do recall when I first started. If you're a little new, you're kind of nervous about speaking up at all, and eight years later, I have become a very qualified leader. And my favorite part about my office, my position, is that I am one block off Main Street in the heart of downtown Brighton, and I'm a pretty well-known figure in walking the city and my interface with a lot of residents and a lot of business owners downtown. I consider myself a very active and engaged listener. I have interfaced a lot of concerns that people might have, just, hey, are my taxes going to go up due to, you know, something? Or I've heard this, or this rumor's going around. Is this true? And I've interfaced a lot with residents, with, excuse me a minute, is there, is there a problem? I'm sorry, I'm not at home right now. I've interfaced a lot with business owners and people. I try to resolve issues, and I feel like I have a lot of engagements with residents. Thank you.
Okay, and Paul Gibson, you are next to answer question number one.
I think I bring a unique way of problem solving. I have a legal and a scientific background, so I can look at a problem from different angles, and that's been very beneficial throughout my 14 years as litigator, by helping opposing parties reach consensus by taking myself out of the equation, objectively evaluating the evidence, listening to others, and coming up with creative settlements. That has translated pretty well over the last year and a half of my time on council. I think the results speak for themselves, and there's a fair bit of institutional knowledge that we have going on right now. At least I have going on right now for my time on council. Why? Explain the reason for why you're running. As I said during the opening statement, I think that those who can serve should serve. I think that is a very important thing that we all need to do is to work towards serving others. And in particular, local governance is a public service. And frankly, I care about the community in which my wife and I are raising our family. Thank you.
Okay, and Dennis Nos, you are next to answer question number one.
Thank you. I believe the past experience that I had, albeit back in the 80s and 90s, which is a ways back, has a great deal in educating me and preparing me for, again, entering back into the service. Career-wise, I've spent my entire life in the public sector. I've been a union representative for 40-plus years, all in the public sector, representing unions all over the entire state of Michigan, basically. So I've interacted with states, city, with county, road commissions, understanding their budgets and how things work. In the time that I was on council, we were in a growth spurt with the city. Chalice Road was developing, the mall was developing, the library went to a district library, the fire department went to an association. And all that I was involved with, and I had the pleasure of being one of two council members who went down to interview Dana Foster, who ended up serving as city manager for 25 years, give or take a few days. I'm prepared now to offer more of my time without having to worry about my work life. And I'm born and raised here. I've got 73 years, darn near, of living in Brighton minus service time and some work assignments. So I'm ready to serve, and I look forward to it.
Okay, and Ken Schmank, you are next for question number one.
Thank you. So my qualifications and experience, I went through it a little bit in my bio, but, you know, I've got a BBA in Business Management from Eastern Michigan University. I've been a longtime resident of the city of Brighton and Livingston County. I've been on the Planning Commission for about three-plus years and also on the zoning board. But I think what makes me a little bit unique is I've helped build four technology companies. Again, we build them, we get them profitable, we sell them. But I've also worked in that time with a lot of small and medium-sized city and county governments all across the US. And I've learned quite a bit working with those cities and counties. Some of the other things, every position I've ever been in, I've always, you know, been the top performer. I've received Six Sigma Awards, the Daimler Chrysler Directors Award, worked with the US Air Force CALZEDI Office. I received an award there. I also was Chair of the Automotive Industry Action Group and Automotive Supplier Support Group as well. The reason I'm running, honestly, if all the current city council members were running, I probably wouldn't run. I like all of them. I think they've done a great job. However, when the position came over, I knew I had a lot of experience that I could offer in helping the city grow. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you to all five candidates for your wonderful answers to the question number one. So because we are going, rotating through Susan Gardner, you will be the first one to answer question number two. And the question is, what do you identify as the priority issues facing our community, and how would you address them if elected? Susan?
Yes, I believe the top concerns that we have today, well, one of them would be development. I have been on city council for eight years and also on Planning Commission for nine years. And so these roles have been a little intermixed for me, but of course, this is about city council. And city council is the ultimate approver of the developments that are being proposed in our city. But I have seen it in a very large perspective in the way that it impacts us. And five years ago, we worked on a lot of zoning changes, zoning ordinance changes that affected our zoning map. And we rezoned parts of our city for density, and a couple new developments have been completed, Conley Square and also the Bluffs of Spring Hill. And we also have DTN coming onboard. So traffic flow, density, and how that's going to be handled within our community, making sure that we have housing for all age categories, so cradle to grave, people are here where we want them to be in our beautiful city. And how we handle our tax base properly for the large infrastructure needs that are coming. Thank you.
Okay, and Paul Gibson, you are second to answer the question, please.
I'll pick up where Susan left off with the infrastructure needs. We have realistically over $100 million in infrastructure needs, 30 million of which for the wastewater treatment plant is coming up right around the corner. That is a huge issue that we have coming up. Sticking on the issue of money, we need to continue paying into MERS and to OPEB, as we have been over the last five years, and you can credit council member Bone as one of the members who did this with getting us back on track financially. We had to continue making those payments. Susan also talked about our growth. We do need to get a handle on our growth right now. I believe we have over 550 PUDs going in the city of Brighton alone, just as many on our border. In the next few years, we're going to see the impact of that on our traffic and on our roads. That is a concern that I think we all share, which goes into the next part, which is our master plan is up to be reviewed, and that does need to be updated. Just a couple more things. We are losing council member Emes, who was a great asset to our council. And the four of us that get picked, we need to make sure that we can fill those big shoes that he is leaving behind. Finally, the last few issues that I see, parking needs to be addressed, our public bathroom should be addressed, and we do have the tridge that needs repair over the next few years. Thank you.
Okay, Dennis Nos, would you please answer the question? You need to unmute yourself, please?
There we go. I believe that we do have to get a handle on the development and the expansion within the city that we have control over, fully understanding and recognizing that everything that goes on in the abutting townships around us, growth-wise, is impacting us because we serve as pretty much the service center for all of those townships as well. So traffic becomes a problem. Parking becomes a problem. I think it's time that we start looking at parking as a major issue in two things. One, I think we're going to have to look at a structure that will handle more parking. And two, I think we have to look at taking the cost factor, the maintenance of these parking structures and parking lots off the backs of the city residents and putting it on the people that are using them by instituting some sort of a paid parking program, an enforcement program. The master plan, I'm not sure what improvements we're looking to do there. I guess that would be something to pick up on if I'm elected. And the tridge repair, I was there when we put the tridge in. I understand it's time to repair the tridge now. And I look forward to being able to serve. I think my experience will get me up and running in a very quick fashion. Thanks again.
Okay, and Ken Schmank, it's your turn.
Thank you. So I kind of prepared for this meeting by talking with Chief Proctor at the police department. I talked with Marcel at DPW. I talked with Gretchen, our city manager. I talked to Mike Crusor, our city development manager. I talked to Tara. And I talked to other city council members. And from that, and my personal belief is that, number one, safety is always a number one priority, which I think city council's done an awesome job with. The other issue I saw that I agree with most council members, parking is a big issue, right? We've seen it while we've done the downtown streetscape. I think we really need to address that to make it much easier for people to come into the city and for our residents who travel in to visit downtown. Being a business owner, I'm always about financial accountability, right? That was my job. I'm not really a tech guy, but I managed and grew the company. The other one I had was controlled growth, right? I think we have an opportunity to grow, but we have to look at, we really don't have a lot of land to expand to, right? It's a three-square-mile city, and we need to be careful on what we decide, what we want in the city. And then the last one I had was long-term water improvement, right? I have a lot of neighbors that have said, you know, look at all the hot water heaters on the side of the street come garbage day. So, thank you.
Okay, and Jim Bone, you are the fifth person to answer this question, please.
I certainly can't disagree with what I've heard from my fellow candidates. Certainly, when Paul touched on the wastewater treatment plant, basically, we've got a 30-year-old wastewater treatment plant where a lot of the equipment is reaching the end of its useful life and trying to navigate our way around figuring out financing to refurbish that plant without having rates going through the roof is going to be a huge challenge for the next council, for sure. Public safety, as Ken mentioned, is my number one priority, and I agree with Ken on his assessment there. And making sure that our police department always has the tools that they need to do their job and to deliver on their mission of public safety to the community is paramount, for sure. A couple other challenges, and I think Paul touched on these as well. Pension liabilities and OPEB liabilities, which is other post-employment benefits, typically retiree healthcare, are a continual challenge for the city, making sure that we continue to fund those. And for example, with pension liabilities, over the past couple of years, we've made extra payments to that liability to help bring down that unfunded portion of that. So those are some of the big challenges that we face, and the next council's certainly going to have to take on, for sure. So I can't disagree with what I've heard from the other candidates.
Okay, and once again, thank all of you for your wonderful answers. So now we are on question number three, and Paul Gibson, you will start. You'll be the first one to answer. Brighton has the look and feel of a small town, and many residents are of the opinion the recent development of condos slash apartments seem counterintuitive. As a member of the city council, how will you respond to residents who feel they are losing that sense of community living?
Thanks for saving this question for me to go first. I can't disagree with any of that, and we've, a few of us have used this term, controlled growth. We need to continue growing the tax base in order to keep up with all these payments, including the $100 million debt and everything. We have a lot of money that we need to generate. We have to be creative. It's a very difficult thing to do, and that is something that we need to address with our next master plan. The quality and diversity of housing is one of the five tenets of our master plan. We need to address that. We need to make sure that we are not having too much growth right now. You can have sustained growth and controlled growth to grow that tax base properly and not have that feeling of explosion where you lose that small-town feel altogether. But this is a very difficult thing to juggle, and it's going to take an entire council and input from the community, showing up to council meetings and talking during that call to the public, reaching out to us individually, reaching out directly to our city staff and city manager to really come together and formulate a plan. Thank you.
Okay, and Dennis Nos, would you like to answer, please? Dennis, you're muted?
Yep, nope, I got it.
Okay, thank you.
I am clearly involved. I'm the one who's been here since 1950, which is the year I was born. I was here before the freeways came through. I understand what growth is, not only in the city of Brighton, but all around us as it impacts us. I do firmly believe we need to have some control over that. We need to be careful not to lose sight of the fact that if we only have so much land to develop, so much room to grow, and that doesn't necessarily mean that we need to grow up as in four- and five-story-high apartment premises or condo units that hardly anybody in the city can afford to live in when they get built. We have to need to start looking at what's more reasonably priced for people and so that we not only have those who have the well-being, but those who may not have as much to be able to live. We do have to worry about, I was here when we expanded and built the wastewater treatment plant that we have, when we added new wells that we have. I understand the processes of doing those kinds of projects and getting them underway and staying willing and ready to put in as much time and effort as possible, and I look forward to being able to have that opportunity. Thank you.
Okay, and Ken Schmink, would you please answer the question?
Absolutely, and and I think we're all singing from the same hymn book, by the way. I grew up in Dearborn, Dearborn Heights area as a kid, and it was it was crowded, right? There wasn't a lot of land, there were houses on top of each other. And and that's the reason I moved out to the Brighton area thirty five plus years ago. I like the feel of a small town. I know we have to, we have to grow, but I think, as everybody mentioned, we don't have a lot of, a lot of room to develop anymore, right? It's coming to a point where, you know, we're going to be a little bit saturated. I agree with absolutely a hundred percent controlled growth, right? And and we work together as a team in city council. I agree, I know the master plan's coming up, we're going to have to take a look at that. Parking, again, I mentioned earlier, is is a big issue. We're going to have to address that. I mean, everybody that I know loves coming down to Main Street. Right? It's a fantastic place. I love that it's crowded. I love that they've redone it and it's looking great. We also have to look at the the water plant, right? I know it's thirty plus years old. They've done a fantastic job of maintaining it. So there is going to be, you know, some funding we need to look at to to get those things done. Thank you.
Okay, and Jim Bone, it is your turn to answer the question, please?
The question you posed is is almost like an age old question where it seems to affect every city, every generation as one generation moves to the next, there's a longing to maintain and hang on to the past and I would certainly say probably a hundred years ago, when folks looked at at Brighton and change was happening, probably some of the residents weren't too happy with that change. With that said, especially in the near downtown area, some of the changes to the zoning that have taken place over the last several years have really had a meaningful impact. To be quite honest, when you look at some of the neighborhoods and some of the homes in those neighborhoods near downtown, some of the homes weren't in the best kept shape. And and what you're seeing now on First Street and Second Street are homes that were in disrepair, being torn down and new construction taking place, or people are investing in rehabbing those homes and and when people own property, it's 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 hard to tell people you can't do this with your property. They have a right to develop property. And as long as it meets zoning, or if it doesn't meet zoning and they go to the ZBA and they get a variance to build, they're welcome to it. We can't stand in the way of progress and it's to me, it's just that it's like an evolutionary thing with with development, and we just have to be smart in how we manage it and start with our zoning.
Okay, and Susan Gardner, would you answer the question, please?
Yes, yeah, this is actually a favorite topic of mine. The long time that I've been on planning commission, even one more year than city councils, eight years. Five years ago, we did a review of our zoning ordinance language as well as our zoning map. And Second Street up to Whitney Street is more of a medium density, and then beyond Whitney, where the DTN four story apartments are are now started building is higher density. And the reason that we look to concentrate that along Second Street and in that area is that we understood that residents would be sensitive. I mean, there's a need for what we call that middle housing layer, not single family homes and not, you know, tiny apartments. People want to have a condo feel, they want the walkability to our to our downtown, but we need to, you know, consolidate that and put this in a focused location. So that was the attempt that was that was done, and we believe we did a really good job with that. So right now we have some new condos along the Mill Pond. We have then the DTN project under under construction. Now that said, this very Monday night, Planning Commission is opening a new chapter of master plan review. So please come to the meeting if you'd like, seven o'clock this Monday, if you have an opinion. But, oh my goodness, I'm out of time. There's so much tomorrow I could say on this. Thank you.
And thank you. So now we are already on to question number four. And Dennis Nos, you will be the first one to answer in this rotation? Question number four is air and water quality have been council discussions. And describe what environmental stewardship means to you? And what steps would you take to ensure climate protection occurs in this community?
Well, I'm just looking at the question over here on the side. I I think our our water system is is one of the better ones around. We've always been saddled with the problem of having hard water, which is part of what generates the water heaters out if they don't have water softeners there. The the cost of trying to soften the water to get rid of the iron before it goes to the individual residents has in the past been looked at and been found to be cost prohibitive. So that is one of the things that ends up being the responsibility of the residents that receive the water. We have moved wells, we've added wells. We've expanded our our water service network to include arrangements and contracts with townships around us in various areas that have had water problems. I look forward to us being able to expand on that to generate some revenue and to to continue providing the the good service. On others, wastewater, back when I first got on, Brighton Lake was a dead lake. I was on board when we put the wastewater treatment plan in that that took care of that problem and brought that back to a vibrant lake. Would look forward to continuing to marshal those kinds of activities.
Okay. And now Ken Schmink, it's your turn to answer this question.
Absolutely, and thank you. And I think we're all going to be, you know, in agreement with this, but um, yeah, absolutely, the water quality. I do have a softener, and I have to change my filter every two months. As most of my neighbors and a lot of the residents. It's a big undertaking, it's very expensive. I I believe we should be looking at grants and funding, and I know talking with Marcel at DPW, talking with Gretchen or city manager, and again, some of the other council members, that's something that is going to be addressed. It's it's more of a long term, it's not going to happen overnight. But but I feel very confident that we can get something accomplished. As far as air quality, I think, and I believe that the current city council and you know, the city staff have done a really good job, right? We don't have room to put a big major, you know, automotive plant or something like that, so they've done a good job of limiting those types of businesses in Brighton. So I feel our air quality has done very, very well. And it all comes down again to that master plan and working together to see what we can do as far as, you know, again, controlled growth. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Jim Bone, would you like to answer the question, please?
I certainly would. With respect to water quality, several, within the last five years, our former city manager brought to council a proposal of putting on board a a regulatory compliance supervisor. And the person that fills that position right now is a gentleman by the name of Josh Bradley, and he's charged with making sure that the city is in full compliance to all water regulations and waste treatment regulations and and some of the programs that he works on include a cross connection program to make sure that there's no contamination that seeps its way back into the water system. And then he also inspects some of the businesses and restaurants in town with through the program is called the Frog Program, which is fats, rags, oil and grease, where making sure that all of that unsettling stuff is handled in the in the in the proper manner, so it doesn't end up in our sewer system and contaminate our environment. We're fortunately that we live in Livingston County and within Livingston County and within the city of Brighton, we don't really have a lot of heavy industries that would cause a lot of air pollution. So we're blessed in that regard, but from a city perspective, I can tell you that past councils and this current council take environmental stewardship very, very seriously and we will certainly continue to do so.
Okay, thank you. And Susan Gardner, would you please answer the question?
Yes, thank you. I'm not going to repeat what council member Bone just said. He actually did a very nice job of summarizing the current city efforts and the success of those efforts and how council has been involved in, you know, council and city staff is a partnership, and we work things together and it's there's a lot of success that's happening right now, but since you're talking about overall environmental stewardship, I will talk about a favorite topic of mine, and it affects air quality, and that's green space. I would love to see, first of all, we're a tree city, but I would like to see as, I I want trees to be everywhere that they can be. We just lost some of our downtown trees. We're going to get new downtown trees, which I appreciate. But the mature trees that we have remaining in our city, which of course we have a lot of trees in our city yet, I want more trees planted. So if anyone needs a street tree in front of their house, that kind of thing, I I want an expansion of the number of trees that we have in our city. I want additional recreation space. I want additional green space. I want us to find room for pocket park and park-like settings and recreation as much as possible. I know that's not exactly what you were looking for, but it certainly affects the air quality, the and the quality of of our life from a from a nature and environmental standpoint. Thank you.
Thank you. And Paul Gibson, would you answer the question, please?
Sure, and this will be a short answer, because I'm not going to repeat what everybody else already said, and everyone has already provided great information on this. I I think one thing to add would be just how responsible city staff is when evaluating this this thing we keep talking about redevelopment. An example would be Limbaugh and and what they are doing there to protect against the plumes that were underground and making sure that that does not impact the air or the water quality there. The bottom line is we need to keep doing what we're already doing. Lastly, environmental stewardship to me, just to throw this answer out there, is is the proper treatment of the land and everything living on it. Stewardship is reward in and of itself, and it's something that should always be practiced. Thank you.
Okay. And I think that is all of five of you for question number four. So now we are on to our last question, question number five, and that will be first answered by Ken Schmink. And the question is, community residents repeatedly state that we have traffic problems in our community even before the closing of Main Street. And how would you address those concerns? Ken?
Um, thank you, and that's a great question. I think traffic, you know, I I agree with it. I'll give you a good example, and this goes back a few weeks ago. I noticed the the new road put in by Lee Road and Pepper Grove for the buses going to Scranton. And they, that was only supposed to be used for buses going in and out of there. What was happening there, people were going in and out of there for different sports games. I called and had a discussion with Chief Proctor, actually Susan Gardner put me in touch with Chief. I'll tell you, he was fantastic. He went out there the next day with me and Christie Bell, the school resource officer. He took a look at it. He said, I agree a hundred percent. There's also a crosswalk for kids that are going to be walking over to Scranton. And literally the next day, there were buses only signs and a stop sign there. And that helped tremendously. I think, again, based on the limited amount of space we have, you know, the traffic circles worked very well in certain areas. I think DPW does a good job, but it's going to be up to us and the residents to to look at the different areas in in where we can do improvement. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Jim Bone, would you answer the question, please?
This is a fifty million dollar question for sure, maybe a five billion dollar question. Simply put, from my perspective, the roads in and around the city of Brighton, and even if you look county countywide, for the most part, they weren't designed and built to handle the traffic load that we have today with the so many people discovering Livingston County and the great quality of life that we have here and people moving here. Plus the fact that Brighton is basically one of the large commercial centers for the county. You know, we're inundated with with folks. We have a very lively and active downtown that draws in a lot of people, which adds to adds to traffic concerns and then throwing in the the construction work on US twenty three and prior to that, the rework and reconstruction on Old Twenty Three. And we've seen a huge influx of traffic and basically exacerbating a a problem that we already know that we've got. I don't think there's a real easy answer to this. You know, people are going to continue to to move out to Livingston County and take advantage of what we have to offer in the county and certainly take advantage of what we have to offer in the city of Brighton. And to be quite honest, that's what we want. We want people to enjoy our great city and take advantage of it. But unfortunately, the one of the side effects of that is that the increased traffic and just maybe a situation that we're going to have to live with. No easy answer here.
Okay, and Susan Gardner, could you answer the question, please?
I need five minutes, but I'll do what I can. First of all, if we had fewer cars on the road, that would help, and that means sidewalk gaps, safe biking, safe walking. I am a huge proponent of walking and biking safely, so that would help. But let's look around us because we're just our three or so square miles, and people don't really know where those lines are, and they tend to think they're all Brighton residents even when they're in the township. And I mean, they say they're from Brighton. And the growth is happening in our townships as well as our city, and it kind of all blends in and it comes our way. They get off twenty three and ninety six due to traffic problems. We have the flex lane on twenty three that's happening. And that's going to help. We're getting a new interchange at Grand River and ninety six. And that is in twenty twenty five, but that should help. Even the flex lane on ninety six that's ongoing now should help. We're getting a roundabout at the Ski Hill. That's going, that's going to be next summer. That's going to help with Latson Road. All of these touch points around us are happening. And everybody knows, because all this construction is going on right now. It it should help the flow through us because what can, what happens isn't just the development in our city that's impacting the people, it's the flows through our city. So hopefully, we're going to have people staying out on the expressways more and finding pathways around us more that are more favorable favorable for travel and alleviate our city's core problems. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you. Paul Gibson, you are next.
Yeah, the community residents are right that there are traffic problems. Unless one of us finds a magic wand, the problems aren't going to be going away. In fact, I suspect that they're probably going to be getting a lot worse over the next few years of all the highway construction that we're going to see, in particular that interchange that we're going to see go in ninety six and Grand River. Susan already talked about some of the things that that they're going to help a little bit. And hopefully, that new interchange does have some stacking that will help with some of the traffic, but frankly, you know, it might not. We've talked a little bit about controlled growth, and that is something that we do need to keep our eye on and making sure that we have controlled growth to not overburden our roads. Lastly, one of the things we are trying to do, and it's spelled out in our master plan, is that we want to have a more walkable community. And that starts with our sidewalk gap program and making our community more convenient and safer for bikers and those who are walking. Other than that, this is, this is a problem without a very good solution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Dennis Nos, you are the last person to answer this question, please?
Thank you. Well, I I agree with the the concept of controlling growth to try and slow things down. The problem is the growth that is driving all of the traffic problems is not necessarily attached to the city of Brighton itself. It's from the surrounding communities, the surrounding townships around us and is is highlighted a little bit by the development within the city limits. The fact of the matter is, a majority of the roads that are not the major roads, not Main Street, The fact of the matter is, a majority of the roads that are not the major roads, not Main Street, not Grand River, are the roads that are picking up an awful lot of traffic. Flint Road. We had the development that Pulte put in up on the hill. We had the Conley Development. All of that traffic funnels, guess what, down the residential streets, not down Grand River. They come down and they end up on St. Paul Street. They end up on Church Street. They end up on Leith Street. That's the part that we can control. The growth that is taking place now on Second Street, that traffic is going to be able to go down Second Street. But once it dumps out either onto Main Street or onto the side streets going the other way, it's going to be problematic. Without tearing up half of the residential streets and widening them out and providing more lane each, the traffic is going to be the traffic and it's going to be what we have, and we just have to try to deal with it as best we can within the availability of funding. Thank you.
Okay, and that concludes all of our questions for this evening. And so I want to thank all of you candidates for all of your wonderful answers. And so we are going to go on to our closing statements now. And we will begin begin with Jim Bone for closing statement. And Jim, take it away.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for putting on this evening's forum. For the past 16 years, it has been an honor and privilege to be on city council. I've certainly certainly learned a lot about local government these past 16 years. I would like to think that the knowledge that I gained over the last 16 years has made me a better city council member. Over the past 18 months, the city seems to really have hit it really has hit its stride. There's a lot of positive momentum in the city and the working relationship between city council and city staff has never been better. One of my goals of re-elected would be to help reinforce that positive momentum and to work to maintain that wonderful working relationship between council and staff. Through the work of city council and city staff, the city is well positioned for success. I would like to help make that successful reality. As a city, we do face some important challenges going forward, such as the aging infrastructure after wastewater treatment plant, pension liabilities, retiree healthcare, improving our city streets, roads and sidewalks. I would like to be part of the team that takes on these challenges. Regardless of the outcome of November 7th election, I will respect the will of the voters. One request that I do have of the voters is to support the Brighton Village Police Village that is also on the ballot. Supporting this village will ensure our police department has the funding it needs to support its mission of providing public safety to the community. Please support this important village. Thank you.
Thank you. And Susan Gardner, could you give us your closing statement, please?
Yes, and thank you again for this forum tonight. In summary, I would be humbled and honored to be elected to a third term of city council. If you if you wish to reach out during this campaign, my mobile and email are posted on the city's website and I'm available to talk to you in person. It'd be my pleasure. Our cities evolved in the last eight years and issues are a lot more complex than when they were they were when I started. Streetscape was enormously challenging challenging for drivers, pedestrians and business owners. And we've added housing developments and made ordinance changes that have reshaped the zoning map of our city. We're essentially built out, but we must continue to meet the development needs of our community and be smart of what we add and where we added. We must manage traffic flow and parking and infrastructure so that critical services are never interrupted. I am a strong proponent of the resident and peaceful coexistence with neighbors and businesses. I want you to be safe when you're driving, walking or biking, and I want more recreation for all ages. We have a very special city and I'll continue to to work to make it even better, both for us that are here now, those that are babies and my six grandchildren. And before closing, thank you for the patience that you've had in our streetscape and Main Street improvements with our new water line and the streetscape. It's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Gibson, can we have your closing statements, please?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for providing this resource to our voters and also to to everyone here who is listening to this, trying to educate themselves and fulfilling their civic duty. Here's what I've actually gained from from all this. I think you have five candidates here that understand the issues, that have the right attitude and have a proven track record serving the city. I I don't think you can make the wrong choice here, picking any any one of the four of the of the five of us. I'd like to repeat what council or Mayor Portembone said about the police village. I think it comes out to be about 50 cents a month per per person. And it goes directly to help our police department with purchasing the right equipment for for safety. And it also helps them, the long, long story short, with retention, showing that we have a community that supports our police. And I don't need to repeat anything else I've said with a few seconds that I have left. One thing I did want to bring up is on the 23rd, September 23rd, the Ruck to Live event is going forward. This is a group of people that bring awareness to suicide of veterans. They are doing everything they can to make it as minimal of an impact on on the city and everyone in the city with their route. But that being said, they want to make a lot of noise and they want to have this thing be heard and seen. So I'm trying to take this as an opportunity here to make a little bit of noise for them. If you have an opportunity to do the Ruck, do it. If not, go out and support them. Thank you.
Okay, and thank you, Paul. Dennis Nos, can we have your closing statements, please? Unmute yourself, please.
I thought I did. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for their supporting the educational process here for the general public, the voters. We have kind of limited resources in in getting out to the public and and this by far is one of the better formats for that. I do want to support the police village as well. It provides not not only the equipment, the safety, but training that they need. I bring to the table the experience. I was there when we dealt with the sewage problems and the the construction and expansion of the plant, the water system. I was there. I've been there. I look forward to being able to try and address that again. The the control of growth is something that that we're all going to have to look at and and try to understand, but there's really not that much more property left for development. So it's going to fall back down to redevelopment and how we want to handle it. I want to say I'm a Vietnam veteran. I was proud to serve my country then. I was proud to serve on council for the 11 years that I did the Planning Commission Chair and and one of the founders of the Brighton Memorial. So as we built that, I would hope that the supporter of the voters will come my way and and everyone else here is qualified, so it'll be interesting to see. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Ken Schmink, we'd like to hear from you, please.
Yes, again, thank you. And like everyone, thanks to the League of Women Voters, we really appreciate you all putting this on. I also want to thank all the candidates. I agree with all of you, all five here that have talked tonight, I I think are really good people. I think the city would do well with picking any four of us. I can tell you with with my experience in leadership and working with other city and county governments all across the United States, I I bring a wealth of knowledge and experience with that. Also being on the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board, I bring experience there. Again, I think everybody here has done a great job. I love the city of Brighton. I I'm proud to have raised two daughters here in the city of Brighton. Love the community. I I've worked with city staff, police department, DPW, all great people. We really have a phenomenal staff and a great group of city council. And last thing, I do want to echo the police village. Talking with Chief Proctor, we really need to get that passed, right? I think everybody's goal here is safety of our community, our residents, our businesses and the city staff. And I'll just plead with everybody, please, please go vote for the village. Thank you.
And thank you, candidates. And we are back to have closing remarks by Ellen Lafferty, the president of League of Women Voters of Livingston County. Ellen?
All right. Thank you so much for a wonderful evening, everyone. We want to thank the candidates and wish the Brighton voters the best. Just an excellent format tonight, and we appreciate you all participating. We also want to thank the league volunteers who assisted in developing tonight's program. There's a lot of work in putting this in place. And special thank you to the staff at the Brighton District Library for providing the technology support to make this event possible. All recordings of our candidate forums are going to be available for streaming on our league's website, our Facebook page, the YouTube channel, and as soon as that's up and running, we'll be happy to share. The League of Women Voters reserves the right to publicize the forum and may invite the media or some other entity not associated with any of the candidates or campaigns to provide televised, radio or other coverage of the forum. Copyright ownership of the recordings or transcripts resides with the league. The candidates and their supporters will not use the forum, portions of the, or any audio, video or transcripts for political advertising or other purposes without written permission of the league. You can see additional questions posed to these candidates tonight and the responses when you go to the League's online voter guide, vote411.org. The questions and responses will be available for viewing on September 25th, when they're going to be published, just in time for the absentee ballots arriving in your mailbox. All voters are now eligible to cast absentee ballots and to request their name be placed on a permanent absentee ballot list, voter list. Be sure to contact the city's clerk's office if you've not already received the permanent absentee voter application. Voting a person also takes place in your local precinct location. Election and voting information in Brighton can be found on the city's website at brightencity.org. I just want to tell voters, I didn't write this in my notes, but that police village that was being mentioned, the language of that village is in that vote411.org. It's going to be, you're going to see your ballot ballot, all the candidates and the village. And you're going to see who to vote for, your choice, but the language of that village is on vote411.org. Just remember, no matter how you do it, be sure to vote in the November 7th general election. Thank you, everyone, and good night.